Hello, can you hear me now?
There we go.
Thank you. Thank you all for your patience. Thank you all for showing up. My name is Brutus Canareggi. I'm your town moderator. It's awesome to see so many of your folks here tonight. At this time, I declare that the warrant has been duly posted and published and that the reading of the warrant is waived. So, welcome. The first thing I'd like to do is just recognize my fellow veterans out there. I think this is day before Veterans Day. Everybody there? I also another thought when I was putting my notes together. You know, around 250 years ago, town meeting wasn't being held in Millis because we were still part of Medway. But I'm sure when those folks were getting together, they were talking a lot about independence. And that's how far we go back, this former government. So, it's pretty unique. It's pretty special. And I'm glad we're all here and I want to thank you again. So, at this time, I'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before I introduce some other folks, I'd like to take a moment of silence for the folks here that remember Ms. Kathy McGinnis. She gave over 40 years of her life serving this town. She served, I think, from the selectmen, she's on the FinCom, various boards. I was on a planning board with her for 20 years. She's a great woman and this town's going to miss her with the information that she brought forward. So, if you have a moment of silence, I appreciate it. Thank you and God bless. So, I'd like to recognize a couple of state officials here. Representative James Irina DeRosa, as I've said, sir. I've been doing this for quite a number of years. He's always been here. I'd also like to represent Representative Marcus Vaughn, who's also here. And I don't believe there's a representative from Roush here.
No.
Okay. Next, I'd like to introduce our Select Board. Aaron Underhill is chair person. Vice Chair Craig Schultz. Ellen Rosenfield Clerk. Our Town Administrator, Mike Judinski. Our Finance Director, Jody Curzy. And our Town Clerk, I got this one right, Kathy Smith. I'm supported by Mr. Jason Tallaman. He's our Town Counsel. He's an expert in this. If I get the procedures wrong, he will let me know. Our Finance Committee, the Chairman John Lor, and he will introduce the new members afterwards. I also, tonight, because of the large crowd, I'm going to have two deputy moderators, Mr. James McCaffrey, who's over in the gymnasium, who did this job for a number of years and has always been a mentor to me, and then Mr. Nathan Maltinsky, who will also be filling in as needed. And most importantly, I want to thank Susan Vara and all the tellers that are here assisting tonight. They do a wonderful job getting everybody in here. Also, the Millis Police, Millis Fire, and Millis Public Works. There are a few items on the warrant that require a two-thirds majority. Normally, I'd have to standing count such votes. But if with your assent of this body, I can be authorized to declare an obvious two-thirds majority vote. So, if you assent to allowing me such authority, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Jim in the gym. Motion carries. Thank you. General rules for town meeting. Governed by town meeting time and local bylaws, I will explain procedures as needed and will recognize requests for points of order. The first motion for each article will generally be made by the Finance Committee. Those who make motions will have the first opportunity to explain the motion. All comments and questions shall come through me, the moderator. Please step up to the mic and provide your name and address. You can only comment here in the auditorium. So, if you are in the gymnasium and you need to speak, you need to come over to the auditorium. Motions and motions to amend generally must be written, provided that, for ministerial or collective corrections. I will accept friendly amendments and we will help with the procedure if that's needed. I will try to balance the discussion as well as I can. Everyone will have a fair chance to speak on a matter, but at certain point, I want to avoid repetitions and I would ask that you do the same. There'll be a maximum of three minutes when you're up at the mic. Two minutes a second time to the mic, but do not be surprised if I hurry you along. I may allow someone with new info to speak a third time, but by bylaw, I may limit that speaker to two times. There are some excellent topics on the warrant. I hope we have a spear debate that this meeting both supports and challenges the issues that are represented. However, I expect all comments to be civil and respectful. I want to hear the facts and your opinions. What I don't want to hear is what you think someone else's opinion is. Comments should be not be personal and direct at any individual. In other words, be kind to your neighbor, even if you might not agree with them at the topic at hand. We have many local officials and between me and them, we'll try to answer any questions that you may have. When I ask for a voice, vote, no shouting, we get it. You don't need to yell. If I cannot discern the result, I may ask for a show of hands. If I still cannot discern, I will have, I'll take a vote count. I respect and call all the questions or motion to cut off a debate. With that said, anyone lined up at the mic at the time may be allowed to speak, but understand if I think it's premature, I will reject it. Similarly, if I am hearing a lot of the same comments, I may abbreviate the debate on my own and call for a vote. I'm not going to accept a motion to take articles out of order. I think we can have an expedient town meeting in enjoyable way. So, once again, thank you. Mr. Lor.
Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Lor and I am the current Chair of the Millis Finance Committee. Finance Committee is composed of nine members. I'd like to recognize all the members tonight. If you could each raise your hand. Pete Barubi, Eric Marthenson, Heidi Gilmore, Mark Johnson, Jen Zaretsky, Joyce Baryardi, Brett Housler, and Michael Crowe. Over the last few months since September, the Finance Committee has had meetings almost every Wednesday. Throughout these meetings, we've had various departments and committees present the 16 different articles that are found in the warrant. Before we dive right into the warrant, I'd like to recognize a few people, both in the administration as well as the Finance Committee. So, we have a few new faces up here on Finance Committee. Brett Housler, he brings an analytical skill set where he has worked in different capacities during his professional career implementing standards, operating procedures, improving financial systems, and launching capital planning process. He is one of our newer residents in Millis and one of our newer, younger parents on the Finance Committee. We're excited to have him and his energy on FinCom. Mark Johnson has lived in Millis for about six years. He wanted to get settled in before getting involved with the town. Now that he has settled with two young daughters and a third due in January, Mark thought it would be a good time to get involved with Finance Committee. Heidi Gilmore. Heidi has worked for several large companies over the years in marketing communications. Her education and work experience has groomed her marketing skills over time. But she has also adapted to new marketing skills with new technology and digital channels and she has lived in Millis for 11 years. And last on the FinCom, Eric Marthenson. His entrepreneurial expertise is in the technology space where he founded his company about 25 years ago. His analytical skills will help residents of the town understand the various needs with all departments. Eric is also on the Capital Planning Committee as a FinCom liaison. Two administrators I'd like to recognize, Julie Cullenane. Julie is the new Human Resources Director and has worked in the human resource industry her entire career. She brings a vast set of human resources skills to Millis. She has recently researched potential cost-saving areas over the last few weeks since she started. Julie has already added a tremendous amount of value and I'm sure she will continue to add value over time. And last, Aaron Millet. Aaron is the town's Animal Control Officer. The Animal Control Department's function is to enforce all town bylaws, state laws, and town rules and regulations regarding animals. In fact, we have an animal article on the warrant tonight. I'd like to recognize Aaron. A few weeks ago, in October, Aaron received an award for the distinguished service by Animal Control Officers Association of Massachusetts at their annual banquet. This award recognizes educating animal control officers and the public about wildlife. Aaron's passion for animals and rehabilitating wildlife far exceeds the daily tasks of the department. This award reflects her devotion and is recognized by her industry peers in the state of Massachusetts. Let's all congratulate Aaron on her award and the bounty she brings to Millis. Thank you. I want to thank the Select Board, School Committee, Town Administrators, who have provided financial details and municipal guidance throughout the entire process this fall. We will be voting on 16 articles tonight. Our goal of the Finance Committee is to understand the needs of each department and the requests made this fall. As outlined in the warrant, we voted and made final recommendations on each article as a committee. We will present each article at tonight's town meeting and then, through the moderator, have the residents vote on each one. So, with that being said, let's review the articles and start with Article One, Pete Barubi.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $15,752.11. Transfer the sum of $9.87 from Sewer Enterprise Reserves and transfer the sum of $4,167.38 from Water Enterprise Reserves for a total sum of $19,929.36 for unpaid bills from a prior fiscal year as written in the warrant.
Seconding. A motion made second. Further comment?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
This article is a very ordinary article. It's done routinely and it really is the reason for the appropriation from free cash and from the reserve funds that have been listed is because when the fiscal year turns over at the 30th of June, if we don't have all of the bills from the previous year, those bills roll over into the next fiscal year, which starts on the 1st of July. So, this funding is for free cash to pay for bills and services that were performed in the last fiscal year.
Is there any further comments on this motion? This requires a four-fifth vote. All's in favor, please say aye. All's opposed? Jim in the gym?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Article two, Mark?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to transfer from marijuana impact fees, free cash, the sum of $99,155 and from free cash, the sum of $348,075 for a total sum of $447,230 for additional wages and expenses not sufficiently funded under Article Three operating budgets of the May 5th, 2025 annual town meeting as written in the warrant. Administration: Social Work Services, Entire Community, $17,500. Police: School Resource Officer Salary, $64,321. School: School Adjustment Counselor, 1 FTE, $17,334. Tri-County: Tri-County Debt Assessment, $348,075 for a total fiscal year 2026 balance of This will require a majority vote. The Finance Committee unanimously recommended approval of this Article eight to zero.
Second. Motion made in seconds. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
This article authorizes the transfer of funds in the amount of $99,155 for marijuana impact fees and $348,075 from free cash to pay for the wages and expenses that were planned to be supported by such funds.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Please come to the mic, identify yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Hasenfuss. I live in 246 Farm Street. How is the school resources officer not in the police department budget?
The question is, how is the school resource not in the police? Mr. Schultz?
The school resource officer is paid from the police department. This is putting funds into the police budget to pay for that position.
Okay, it's not that included already when you have a salary for the entire department?
Mr. Schultz?
This is the last year that we'll have to explain this because the marijuana impact money goes away. But the way it's funded is the marijuana impact funds that are given to the town is used to pay that salary. Through state funding, we get half of it when we do our budget at the start of the year and the other half right now. So, this is paying the other half of that salary. Does that make sense? It's always been in the budget, but it takes two funding cycles to put the money in to pay for it.
Okay, I just, it's just confusing because I thought the police department has a budget on its own. It's always half. He's part of the police department when the school is out. So, that's my question. I support the police. My husband is a police officer. I'm just very curious of how that works in Millis.
Can I say something?
Yeah, well.
They can't hear anybody speaking in the gym. Are they supposed to be able to?
Yes.
I don't think it's working. My phone's blowing up.
Okay, I'm going to go back to the question then, if that's okay.
Mr. Schultz, go ahead.
Yeah. First off, I'm going to say the reason you don't understand it and I don't understand it is because the state's involved, okay? It makes it way too complicated. But we get half of the money from the marijuana impact funds at the May town meeting. We vote the budget for the police department, knowing that we've only funded half that salary for the year. Then, now, the state's told us we have more money. We knew it was coming. It wasn't a surprise. We know how much it's going to be. So, we have to vote the other half of the budget. But as I said, this is the last year we're going to have to do this because the money goes away from that source.
And where is the money going to come back when it goes away? When it's going to come from?
Will absorb it. Will absorb it into operating budgets, the normal operations.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And it'll be easy.
Thank you.
Jim in the gym? Can the folks over there hear? We cannot hear the questions at all. We will allow it to hear the response, but we cannot hear the questions.
It's that mic.
Could someone just test this mic on the side?
Testing, one, two, three. Yep.
Can you hear that? Jim in the gym? I can't hear it, so I'm going to assume that no one else can. Folks, I'm sorry. We just got to take a minute, try to get the audio working.
Thank you. They can't hear the questions.
Jim, can you hear me now? Can we test it again? Say, no one stand up at that mic and just see if it works? Come on, we need a volunteer.
There you go, sir.
You don't have to identify. Testing.
It works. No, inside.
Hello? Hello? Thank you.
Thank you. I can't remember the question. Frank's going to repeat the question. Yeah. Mr. Moderator, would you like me to repeat the question?
Repeat the question, please. Thank you.
There was a back and, can you hear me, I guess, in the gym?
Yes.
Okay. There was a back and forth about why this wasn't in the police department budget. I think you heard my answers, but the main question was why wasn't this in the police department budget? The reason is, is because it's a complicated state funding mechanism that we'll never have to worry about again after this meeting. And it is in the police budget. It's just funded half in May and half in November.
Thank you. Is there any further comment on this motion? Please step up to the mic, identify yourself.
Dan Kress, Mayor for Millis Sixth Street. Would you please elaborate on how exactly the second part would be absorbed next year when the marijuana impact fees go away? Would that be additional tax?
It will, first off, it will not be an additional tax because the only way taxes can go up is if we get 800 people in this room or some number to vote for taxes to go up with a ballot measure. For something this small, we would have to figure out how to do it at the May town meeting. I don't want to spoil the surprise. Please come back in May. But it will not be taxation.
But we have a police officer position that is not, potentially not funded?
I would suggest we're not going to deliberate the FY '27 budget tonight. We have plenty of time to get to that. It's not our goal. It's not our desire to do that. We are confident with something this small, there are, there's ways we can make the budget work, but I can't tell you how we're going to do that yet. That's part of the FY '27 budget. And it's not that I'm being evasive. This is the first question we've ever had about the FY '27 budget.
Happy to be first. Thank you.
Thank you. Is any further discussion? Seeing no one? This is a simple majority. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jim in the gym?
Motion carries unanimously.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to amend Article Eight of the general bylaws by adding a new Section 51, commercial gas-powered leaf blower noise as written in the warrant. This article requires a majority vote.
Seconding. Motion made second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
This article would place limitations on the days of the week and the hours within which gas-powered leaf blowing equipment can be used. This is consistent with bylaw changes many other Commonwealth towns have enacted to ensure less noise pollution for residents as well as less air pollution from emissions of gas-powered equipment. This article was submitted by the Select Board and the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article eight to zero.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Nicole Riley, 258 Village Street. While I understand the underlying intent of this article, I would urge the town to vote no in that the language of it is, it needs a second go around. There are multiple things that are in conflict here. Number one, your limitation on time is actually more restrictive than the Building Department and the Planning Board have for commercial construction. We allow 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, for construction of roads, for construction of subdivisions. And in fact, you have a limitation here where you're, you're referring to commercial gas blowers, leaf blowers, excuse me, but your Sunday prohibits actually timelines for residents. You have, the language does state, it actually references the state statute incorrectly. The stat, the bylaw that you're proposing references enforcement by criminal indictment or complaint under Chapter 40, Section 21, when in fact, that statute provides that fines shall be recovered by indictment or on complaint before a district court. This is not, cannot be made into a criminal law, but if the town were to fine someone and that person failed to pay the fine, the town could go to district court to enforce the fine. You cannot be punished for using, this law could not be written as is because it would imply that someone could be, could be, have a criminal charge against them. Finally, I would question if the intent, as just stated, is for noise pollution, the reduction of noise pollution and the reduction of air pollution, why are leaf blowers that much more of a problem than gas-powered lawn mowers, snow blowers, chainsaws, power washers, rotor tillers? If in the middle of the winter, we have a, we have a snowstorm and my neighbor has their lawn, has their driveway plowed, if this goes into effect, someone could come in with a, their commercial snow blower, could come in and run a snow blower at 2:00 in the morning to clear off their driveway, their front walk. Why is that more, a more of an issue of noise pollution than me, than me having my landscape person come at 5:05 in the middle of the summer? So, again, while I do understand the intent of this, I do believe that the language here has a lot of issues, could be challenged, and I would request that the town vote no. And the Select Board or whoever originally drafted this have a second go of it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Troy Kong in 413 Union. Similar complaints. If this is a noise issue, gas blowers make almost the same amount of noise as electric blowers. The fan noise is where most of it's coming from. I think that needs to be taken into consideration. Also, if it's a light snow in the middle of the winter and I choose to use a leaf blower to clear the snow off my walk, I don't want to go to jail over that.
Thank you. Is there any further comment?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Abbott Ken, 24 Glen Ellen Boulevard. As I read this proposed Section 51, it says a commercial landscaper is defined as a person or entity that receives compensation to utilize landscape maintenance equipment, including leaf blowers. Where does it define? What is the other type of maintenance equipment other than leaf blowers? And is that applied to them? I find it very confusing and legally don't understand it.
Good job, buddy. Thank you.
Van Cleek Road from Exchange to End, milling 1.5 of roadway and replacement with new 1.5 inches of pavement. Baltimore Street from Pleasant Street to Norfolk Road, milling of 1.5 inches of roadway and replacement with same, new. Cedar Street from Farm Street to the end, reclaim the road by replacing two inches of base and two inches of top batuminous concrete, which is considered a full-depth repair. Causeway from Medway to the Town Line, Medway Town Line to 49 Causeway Street, overlay the entire roadway. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? This is a majority vote. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jim? Jim?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Article five. Article five. Is this working? Is it working? Okay. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 for tree pruning and removal. A majority vote is required.
Second. Any further discussion?
The DPW has appropriated $25,000 a year from the General Fund to remove dead branches of trees, or trees, on town property that poses a hazard to the community. This is a service that must be contract work at prevailing wage under state contracts. Typically, it costs $7,500 to $10,000 a day to have trees trimmed or removed. With the overwhelming need for branch tree removal, an additional $100,000 is being asked for to provide safety to the community. There have been extending, exceedingly amounts of calls coming in for the trees, for the danger of the town. The, let's see. If approved, this article will allow the town to move forward with the removal of trees and branches the town tree warden deems unsafe. The FinCom recommends this article, eight to zero. This was submitted by the Select Board, it must pass by a majority vote.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jim? Jim?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Ohr?
Article six. I move that the Town of Milis appropriate the amount of $125 million, which includes the $1,300,000 that was already appropriated for feasibility study and schematic design for the purpose of paying cost to design, construct, and furnish in addition and renovation of the Milis Middle High School located at 245 Plain Street. Scope of project includes the construction of a new academic wing and renovation of the existing academic spaces and common spaces. Inclusive of all building, mechanical systems, along with associated site work improvements, and including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project, which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren for at least 50 years, and for which the Town of Milis may be eligible for grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, known as the MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the Milis School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under MGL Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to use construction manager at-risk delivery method. The Town of Milis acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs that the Town of Milis incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the Town of Milis, provided further that any grant that Town of Milis may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of one, 59.08% of eligible approved projected costs as determined by the MSBA, or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that any appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitation on taxes imposed by MGL 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 and 1/2, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the Town of Milis and the MSBA. This article requires a two-thirds vote.
Second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Article six is to appropriate the necessary funds for the School Building Committee recommendation for the renovation addition of the Milis Middle High School located at 245 Plain Street. Article six is not just about construction costs of the renovation addition of the school, it's about the investment for the future students, town, and community. I want to start by acknowledging how much work has gone into this process, most of you are aware, but let me do a quick recap to ensure everyone understands the dedicated resources and effort over the last four years. Spring of 2021, Select Board submits a statement of interest to the Mass School Building Authority, MSBA. March of 2022, 58 districts applied, applied a statement of interest to the MSBA, but only 17 districts were selected for the next phase, including Milis. November of 2022, at Fall Town Meeting, residents voted to approve a $1.3 million for feasibility study for the Middle High School. Following that vote, the School Building Committee was formed, consisting of 14 members. I'd like to acknowledge and recognize the School Building Committee Chair, Rich Nichols, and all the members of the committee for the time and dedication throughout the entire process. Over the next two and a half years, the School Building Committee worked tirelessly with committee, the school superintendent, Robert Mulaney, and other committees such as the Permanent Building Committee, the Capital Planning Committee, and the Finance Committee. From the start, there have been over 45 School Building Committee meetings, which included multiple community forums. Every step of the way has been properly documented, has been transparent, it's been communicated and discussed from the beginning through tonight's Fall Annual Town Meeting. So why do I share this? Because this moment right now at town meeting is a result of years of hard work. This is not a whim, this is not a rushed idea, this is about the effort it took to get here and understand what is at stake. So what is the cost? If you turn to page two, at the bottom, of the Finance Committee report, all the numbers are outlined here regarding the cost of the project. I'm rounding the numbers here. This is a $125 million project, of which the MSBA will pay 55%, and Milis will pay 45% of the project. 55% is $68 million, again rounding, and the 45% is $56 million. The 45% or $56,250,000 will be financed over a 28-year period. The expected tax rate is 1.51 per thousand dollars. So, for example, a $605,209 average assessed value home, the tax increase would be $914 a year, or $76.17 a month. Based on the construction timeline, these taxes would not go into effect until the end of the construction toward the spring of 2029. What is the opportunity? First and foremost, the town has a rare opportunity of getting a grant from the state for $68 million. If the town votes yes tonight, and at the ballot on December 8th, this 68 million is for Milis. If the town votes no, we do not get this $68 million grant. We do not get a renovation addition, we default to the do-nothing plan, which will cost about $75 million over 10 years, or $19 million more than the current opposition, excuse, current option, and that is very, and that is if every override repair article is passed over that time span. It's an opportunity to allow the town to address all needed deferred repairs at the school, such as heating, ventilation system, fire alarm system, windows, repairing the roof. The school reviews the facility annually, and prioritizes the repaired needs. Not all repairs are addressed based on the annual budget. Going forward, the Capital Planning Committee will coordinate with the School Committee a scheduled maintenance plan, just as it is done with the library and other town buildings. It's an opportunity to meet future student population trends. The New England School Development Council, NESDAQ, conducted enrollment projections for Milis over the next 10 years, showing a slight increase each year. It's an opportunity to comply with current school building codes for classroom space and learning. The energy-efficient design will make it cost-friendly for the long term. It's an opportunity for the town to bring the school building into modern-day learning environment. The school layout, many of us experienced while growing up, is much different than it is today. The town needs to adapt to these new learning standards. It's an opportunity to obtain and retain both students and teachers. This is not just an investment in the physical capital, but an investment in the human capital as well. Last, it's an opportunity to potentially increase property values. Milis is a desirable community, the schools are desirable, desirable for students and teachers. Milis consistently ranks as one of the top 50 schools in Massachusetts, let's maintain this high standard. Remember, this is a two-step process. Everyone should have received an orange card in the mail about a week or two ago. Step one is to vote at town meeting tonight for Article six. Article six is to appropriate the funds for the School Building Committee recommendation for the renovation addition for the Milis Middle High School located at 245 Plain Street. Step two, the special election ballot vote, which is four weeks from now, on Monday, December 8th, 2025, at the Veterans Memorial Building, this ballot vote is what authorizes the tax increase for the town's share of the project. A few final remarks of why now. In a time when federal funding is decreasing and state aid is tightening, this is a $68 million opportunity for Milis to capture. The renovation addition option is the best responsible option for Milis, it's the, it's the least disruptive option for students, it's the least expensive option for taxpayers, and from a capital planning standpoint, it's the best option for an up-to-date school for the next 50 years.
To provide safety to the community. There have been extending exceedingly amounts of calls coming in for the trees, for the danger of the town. Um, the, uh, let's see. If approved, this article will allow the town to move forward with the removal of trees and branches the town tree warden deemed unsafe. The FinCom recommends this article eight to zero. This was submitted by the Select Board. It must be passed by a majority vote.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jim?
Jim?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Orr.
Article six. I move that the town of Milis appropriate the amount of one hundred and twenty-five million dollars, which includes the one million three hundred thousand dollars that was already appropriated for feasibility study and schematic design for the purpose of paying cost to design, construct, and furnish in addition and renovation of the Milis Middle High School located at two forty-five Plain Street. Scope of project includes the construction of a new academic wing and renovation of the existing academic spaces and common spaces. Inclusive of all building, mechanical systems, along with associated site work improvements and including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project, which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren for at least fifty years and for which the town of Milis may be eligible for grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, known as the MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the Milis School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under MGL Chapter forty-four or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to use construction manager at-risk delivery method. The town of Milis acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs that the town of Milis incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of Milis, provided further that any grant that town of Milis may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of one, fifty-nine point zero eight percent of eligible approved projected costs as determined by the MSBA, or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that any appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitation on taxes imposed by MGL fifty-nine, Section twenty-one C., Proposition Two and a Half, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town of Milis and the MSBA. This article requires a two-thirds vote.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Article six is to appropriate the necessary funds for the School Building Committee recommendation for the renovation addition of the Milis Middle High School located at two forty-five Plain Street. Article six is not just about construction costs of the renovation addition of the school. It's about the investment for the future students, town, and community. I want to start by acknowledging how much work has gone into this process. Most of you are aware, but let me do a quick recap to ensure everyone understands the dedicated resources and effort over the last four years. Spring of two thousand and twenty-one, Select Board submits a statement of interest to the Mass School Building Authority, MSBA. March of two thousand and twenty-two, fifty-eight districts applied to, applied a statement of interest to the MSBA, but only seventeen districts were selected for the next phase, including Milis. November of two thousand and twenty-two, at Fall Town Meeting, residents voted to approve a one point three million dollars for feasibility study for the middle high school. Following that vote, the School Building Committee was formed consisting of fourteen members. I would like to acknowledge and recognize the School Building Committee Chair, Rich Nichols, and all the members of the committee for the time and dedication throughout the entire process. Over the next two and a half years, the School Building Committee worked tirelessly with committee, the school superintendent, Robert Mulaney, and other committees such as the Permanent Building Committee, the Capital Planning Committee, and the Finance Committee. From the start, there have been over forty-five School Building Committee meetings, which included multiple community forums. Every step of the way has been properly documented, has been transparent, it's been communicated and discussed from the beginning through tonight's Fall Annual Town Meeting. So why do I share this? Because this moment right now at town meeting is a result of years of hard work. This is not a whim. This is not a rushed idea. This is about the effort it took to get here and understand what is at stake. So what is the cost? If you turn to page two at the bottom of the Finance Committee report, all the numbers are outlined here regarding the cost of the project. I'm rounding the numbers here. This is a hundred and twenty-five million dollar project, of which the MSBA will pay fifty-five percent and Milis will pay forty-five percent of the project. Fifty-five percent is sixty-eight million dollars, again rounding, and the forty-five percent is fifty-six million dollars. The forty-five percent or fifty-six million two hundred and fifty thousand will be financed over a twenty-eight-year period. The expected tax rate is one point five one per thousand dollars. So, for example, a six hundred and five thousand two hundred and nine dollar average assessed value home, the tax increase would be nine hundred and fourteen dollars a year or seventy-six dollars and seventeen cents a month. Based on the construction timeline, these taxes would not go into effect until the end of the construction toward the spring of two thousand and twenty-nine. What is the opportunity? First and foremost, the town has a rare opportunity of getting a grant from the state for sixty-eight million dollars. If the town votes yes tonight and at the ballot on December eighth, this sixty-eight million is for Milis. If the town votes no, we do not get the sixty-eight million dollar grant. We do not get a renovation addition. We default to the do-nothing plan, which will cost about seventy-five million dollars over ten years, or nineteen million dollars more than the current opposition, excuse, current option, and that is very, uh, and that is if every override repair article is passed over that time span. It's an opportunity to allow the town to address all needed deferred repairs at the school, such as heating, ventilation system, fire alarm system, windows, repairing the roof. The school reviews the facility annually and prioritizes the repaired needs. Not all repairs are addressed based on the annual budget. Going forward, the Capital Planning Committee will coordinate with the School Committee a scheduled maintenance plan, just as it is done with the library and other town buildings. It's an opportunity to meet future student population trends. The New England School Development Council, NESDAQ, conducted enrollment projections for Milis over the next ten years, showing a slight increase each year. It's an opportunity to comply with current school building codes for classroom space and learning. The energy-efficient design will make it cost-friendly for the long term. It's an opportunity for the town to bring the school building into modern-day learning environment. The school layout many of us experienced while growing up is much different than it is today. The town needs to adapt to these new learning standards. It's an opportunity to obtain and retain both students and teachers. This is not just an investment in the physical capital, but an investment in the human capital as well. Last, it's an opportunity to potentially increase property values. Milis is a desirable community. The schools are desirable, desirable for students and teachers. Milis consistently ranks as one of the top fifty schools in Massachusetts. Let's maintain this high standard. Remember, this is a two-step process. Everyone should have received an orange card in the mail about a week or two ago. Step one is to vote at town meeting tonight for Article six. Article six is to appropriate the funds for the School Building Committee recommendation for the renovation addition for the Milis Middle High School located at two forty-five Plain Street. Step two, the special election ballot vote, which is four weeks from now on Monday, December eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, at the Veterans Memorial Building, this ballot vote is what authorizes the tax increase for the town's share of the project. A few final remarks of why now. In a time when federal funding is decreasing and state aid is tightening, this is a sixty-eight million dollar opportunity for Milis to capture. The renovation addition option is the best responsible option for Milis. It's the deep, it's the least disruptive option for students. It's the least expensive option for taxpayers, and from a capital planning standpoint, it's the best option for an up-to-date school for the next fifty years. The Finance Committee recommends a yes vote for this article. The Finance Committee voted eight to zero for Article six.
Thank you, Mr. Orr. I have a feeling there might be a couple comments on this, so please, speak into the microphone clearly. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Richard Nichols. I'm the Chair of the School Building Committee. One of the things that I wanted to bring forwards that hadn't been mentioned, that the whole process here was put forwards to plan versus reacting. We looked at all these different options, and one of the ways that we could manage costs would be to have a plan and be able to bid everything out and therefore get a better price for things. So we look for value, and so that's why when they had said earlier we'd gone through multitude of different options, we went through a whole bunch of different options to find the best value for the town of Milis, because we understand that it's been a long road. We've gone through a bunch of projects, and we wanted to make sure that when we were all done, the town got the best value for the dollar. So that's, that's my statement. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Joseph Satell, twenty-six Pearl Street. Good evening, everybody, town council, neighbors, friends. I've been a professional educator for two decades, and I don't work in Milis. I moved here because of it. I moved here for the chance of the schools. For the past two to three years, many of us here in the community, parents, friends, school administrators, teachers, have worked to craft this plan that is both feasible, fiscally responsible, and finally addressed what our town and children deserve, a renovation of our middle and high school. I'll be voting yes, and I invite you to join us to please consider the facts based on the merits of A, B, C. A, it's already partially paid, absolutely needed. We've already paid for a large portion of this cost. Massachusetts is one of the only states that is ahead of its time to fund school building projects that collects a portion of sales tax of every single dime. The MSBA, Massachusetts School Building Authority, has already approved and set the funds apart. Now they're guaranteed. A vote of yes being a requirement to start. If we decline to reclaim our funds, as already stated, they will go to another town and be took. If the already leaking ceiling or HVAC fails, then our town and us alone will be on the hook. A town on the South Shore is a cautionary tale. They voted to pass on their money, even though it just makes sense. And when they re-entered, accepted, and voted again after eight years' absence, the cost per square foot had gone up forty percent. B, as in buzzing, Cladiff Brown shows the success of this, such a plan. It came under budget. The approach has been diligent from the onset. This project is in renovation. It will not be a new build. To use the good bones and save costs with the design and the will. If there is a concern of why the maintenance wasn't undertaken, have no fear, we can just point to ourselves in the mirror. If we are to go back to the future in eight years' time with a judge in eye asking why we didn't vote for this in two thousand and twenty-five, it was cheaper then, so hello, McFly. Finally, C, cost. There is no do-nothing option. A vote of yes will cost the town less. The Milis Middle School project has the lowest cost per square foot of every single comparable school in the state of Massachusetts. With fifty-four point six percent already guaranteed and set aside, it has the highest reimbursement. If we think education is expensive, we can try ignorance. Leaks only get worse. Room's not up to code. Our teachers and students already know this. It is the reality in their daily existence. The roof HVAC electrical all need to be replaced with more on deck. To do these basic things on the car would be more expensive. It'd be more than the entire renovation project. A wise man once said, "We should do unto others," and it was also so said well by Mr. Rogers. We don't just get to be competent human beings without a lot of different investments from others. With the state paying more than half, a vote of yes not only reclaims our already paid sales taxes and makes financial sense, but look at the children. They are worth it. Join us. Vote yes.
Thank you. Eric Marthensen, twenty-eight Timberline Road. I'd like to speak out in favor of this project as well. I support this renovation because it's what's best for Milis. Our school is falling apart. Rain seeps through the roof, windows leak, the boiler can't be repaired. It's literally old enough they can't buy parts. We're using closets as offices. This is embarrassing. It's wrong. Our kids deserve better. Our teachers deserve better. We all deserve better. We're here today to make a simple choice with enormous stakes. Option one, we can vote yes and accept sixty-eight million dollars from the state, money that's ours for the taking. We can add fifty-seven million of our own and transform everything, not just patches and repairs, but a real school, proper classrooms, separate wings for middle and high school, safe, dry, warm spaces where learning can actually happen, a place that attracts great teachers rather than drives them away, an investment that strengthens property values and builds community pride. Or option two, we can say no. Then watch as we spend seventy, seventy-five million, that's at least thirteen million more, just to fix the leaks, replace the boiler, put the patches on. And after spending more money, we still have the same cramped, outdated building that fails our kids every single day. Now, the math is compelling. This project will cost an average homeowner nine hundred and fourteen dollars per year. That's two dollars and fifty cents a day, way less than the proverbial cup of coffee. And with that, we'll turn fifty-seven million dollars into a hundred and twenty-five million dollar asset to give our kids what every other town already has or longs for. That's not frivolous spending. That's investing. It's smart investing. Now, I've heard the doubts. It's too expensive. Well, we've looked at every option. The cost per square foot of this project beats every comparable project in the state. Our state funding percentage is near the top. If there were a cheaper way to build a school, another town would have already found it. They haven't. Instead, towns will study what Milis did right. I've also heard we should regionalize. But we asked, the surrounding towns said no. And here's what people don't realize. Massachusetts has had the same number of regional school districts as it did, has the same number of regional school districts as it did twenty years ago. If regionalization were a holy grail, we'd see that number increasing, but we don't. Regionalized schools don't save much on construction costs. The state auditor found they actually cost more to run, not less. They lose students faster, pay millions in unreimbursed transportation, and need endless town meetings just to pass a budget. Regionalization isn't a solution. It's a distraction. I've also heard there's no rush. Well, tell that to the kids sitting under leaking roofs today. Tell that to the state holding sixty-eight million, million for us, money that will absolutely be spent. Hopefully, it'll be spent here in Milis and not reallocated to another town. Federal and state aid is shrinking.
I'm sorry, I have to move you along.
I'm almost done.
Thank you.
Not growing. This opportunity won't wait. Here's what most be most, though. Milis High School ranks in the top fifteen percent statewide and the top ten percent nationally. Our teachers and students achieve that excellence in a building that's literally falling apart. Imagine what they could do with a roof that doesn't leak. I find that exciting. So this article isn't just about buildings, it's about who we are. Are we a town that settles for closets as offices, that tells our kids they aren't our top priority, or are we a town that steps up when it matters? I urge you all to vote yes with me.
Hello, friends and neighbors. I'm Lauren Barnes, and I live on Curve Street. I want to note two items related to this article. The first one, this is Article six, and the boards that are seated before you, including the School Building Committee, the Select Board, the Permanent Building Committee, Capital Planning and Finance Committee, have presented our town with sixteen articles. So I want to ask everybody who's here, this tremendous attendance, to please, please stay to conduct all of the town's business. It's really sad when we have a forty-plus million dollar budget without a school project, and after one special issue, a lot of people leave. So before you're thinking about it, it will go quickly. And the second thing I want to say is that this attendance is tremendous, but it is also a reminder that there is a tool that would really lower barriers for people who aren't here to attend, an electronic voting device. It's twenty twenty-five.
Ma'am, at last you stay on topic. We're not talking about how we vote. Thank you.
Okay, so, have a good night.
Yvonne Fitzgerald, forty-three Dover Road. I'm coming from a parent perspective and a teacher perspective. I started teaching in Milis in two thousand and two, immediately fell in love and knew that I was never going to leave. It was an amazing school then, and it's still an amazing school. And what we're asking tonight isn't so much to get this advanced technological, state-of-the-art school. We truly are just asking for the bare minimum. It's very difficult for me to walk up my stairs to my classroom where the two windows are leaking water when it's raining or snowing, when the walls are crumbling down. I walk into my classroom, it's freezing, I turn on the heat, then it's like a sauna, and I have to turn it off to ten minutes. But that's not the only thing. I know that this tax increase is going to be very difficult for everyone. It's going to be difficult for me and my family, because we're not of the higher upper class, we're regular working people, but our kids deserve it. I have kids in the school system. We moved here because of the school system. We moved here because we knew that both of our boys were going to get the best education from the most amazing educators. And so, we're not asking for a lot as educators, we're just asking you to support us, just asking you to give us something to compete with other schools. I know we have Chromebooks, and the kids don't appreciate them, and I try to let them know, but I think that putting this investment into our schools is really beneficial, not just for us as educators, for our kids to really appreciate the town that we come from. My kids are proud to come from Milis. I and my husband are proud to have children in the Milis school systems, and I just want everyone to appreciate what Milis is there to offer. Like, our Milis public school systems, we have amazing teachers, we have amazing paras, we have amazing staff, and just saying yes to this vote is really going to show us how much our town cares about us. Thank you.
Good evening. Evan Landry of three thirty-four Orchard Street. Just speaking further to the point, for those of you who are considering leaving early, you may know this already or you may not, the, I believe the issue can be brought up again at the end of the meeting and revoted upon in opposition of the majority's interests. So I want to point that out to you. If you're considering leaving early, I would strongly suggest that you see it through to the end.
Troy Congan, four one three, again. This is going to be the least popular opinion in this room right now. I appreciate that you guys are all gung-ho. This town spends a lot of my money, and I appreciate it. You guys have done amazing things with my money, but you keep asking for more and more, and there has to be a stop to this. I understand that this town is in a great position right now to get oodles of money from the state. I wish that this town would pay off some of its debt, some of its overrides before we consider more.
My name is Robert Robichaud. I live at Union Street number three four four, and I'm not here to oppose the school building at all, but rather a question. This article is before Article fourteen, which is revaluing the city. If the tax rate goes up with the revalue, will that reflect a reduction in the tax rate increase for the school?
Mr. Scholz.
I'll take a stab at it, and I may pass it off to Jody. Our revenue is, that we can collect, is limited by Proposition Two and a Half. This override is for a fixed amount of money. Whatever the valuation is, it might change it from a dollar fifty per thousand to another value per thousand, but we're still only going to collect fifty, say a number, fifty-six? Fifty-six million dollars. That's all that's going to be collected. This will not be affected by any revaluation. The way Proposition Two and a Half works, there's two numbers. There's the valuation of your property, and there's the tax rate, and the total amount of money the town can collect is, is limited to two and a half percent more than the prior year, excluding new growth or an override. Got to put those two caveats in there. So as the property values increase, the tax rate would fall on non-excluded debt. This is excluded debt, but it would fall on non-excluded debt, and then that money would, basically, I don't know, it's hard to explain. I'm sorry. So as property valuations go up, the tax rate will fall down. All things being equal, if everybody's houses were assessed the same, your taxes would go up two and a half percent every year. Now, my house directly across from the school may go up more if a new school is built. Other houses may go up less, but that's, but the town can only collect two and a half percent more. This is the second time, excluding this. This is the second time tonight I'm blaming the state for a very convoluted process, but...
So, if I understand this correctly, if the town were revalued and collected an extra fifty-six million dollars on the revaluation, then the gross taxes would go down on the town, fifty-six million dollars.
Well, let me, let me explain how that works. That's not right. That's not correct. The way it would work is, the town can only collect excluding, excluding this debt.
I understand.
Yeah. When property val, if, let's just play the game. Everybody's property values in this room double. We all, our, our houses double in value. Great day for everybody. Our taxes don't double. Our taxes only go up two and a half percent, because the tax rate would go, and I'm going to round, from sixteen dollars per thousand down to eight dollars per thousand. So you take the tax rate and multiply it by the valuation is how much taxes you pay. So if everybody doubled, if our, if the average house at six hundred thousand dollars is now valued at one point two million dollars, the town does not collect twice as much money. It collects two and a half percent more, and we go from a sixteen percent tax rate down to an, a sixteen-dollar tax rate down to an eight-dollar tax rate and become the lowest in our neighborhood. Now, that's never going to happen, but that's the way the math works. So i, if the revaluation will not change how much a house pays in taxes, it will affect the rate that is attached to that, assuming everybody's house is valued the same.
Affecting the rate you, you have does affect the amount that you pay.
It, 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 it won't, because the town by law can only collect two and a half percent more than it collected the prior year. So if the valuations double, our rate has to fall by half, because that, the law says we can only collect two and a half percent more.
So with the two and a half percent override for the school, if two and a half percent was added for the revaluation, there would be a five percent tax increase for the year?
No. No, no, no. This, this is a whole different bucket. This is fifty-six million dollars we're borrowing for just this project, and it's nine hundred and eighteen dollars per home. Let's play another game. The size of the town doubles to six thousand people. That's nine hundred and eighteen falls. This is always going to be fifty-six million dollars. It's not going to go up, it's not going to go down. It's fifty-six million dollars is what the cost will be for the town.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. I hate explaining taxes.
Mike Peeler, seven Heritage. So you mentioned that the taxes don't start until two thousand and twenty-nine? It's, just, just to be clear, I'm in favor of the, the motion. Have you guys looked at starting the taxes earlier? Because like you said, it was going to finance it. Does that change like interest rates if we got the money in sooner? Like, could we reduce costs by collecting the taxes sooner?
Mr. Scholz. There are things, I, I hate explaining taxes. Just hate it. There's things called bond anticipation notes. We're only allowed to bond money that's in an asset. So we're going to borrow some money along the way, but we're not, those are going to be one-year borrowings, short-term borrowings. As soon as the building opens, we'll do a twenty-eight-year bonding, and we can't bond that until the building is built. What you're describing is arbitrage, and it may be illegal. But it's a great idea.
Sorry, sorry. Just for clarity, you couldn't collect the money, like raise our taxes, collect the money you had, and it just didn't fund? And then when you go to get the bonds, you...
No. Nobody, nobody's going, yeah, that, 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 I'm pretty sure it's illegal. Yeah. It's a great idea. I have thought about it in my private work, but it's not legal. My lawyer told me it's not legal.
Mr. Scholz. Mr. Scholz? I do appreciate your efforts trying to explain our tax laws. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi. Stan Jablonsky, thirty-second Ellen Boulevard. I live in a senior community over fifty-five, and in speaking with some of my fellow residents, it appears to be some confusion on one of the issues. We're being told that if we do not pony up fifty-six million now, we're going to have to pay seventy-five million later. But I'm, what they think is that's an automatic. We get to vote whether we have to spend that seventy-five... We get to vote whether we have to spend that $75 million. Correct?
Mr. Warren.
Correct.
Okay, because there is some confusion. You guys are presenting it tonight like it's an automatic. If we don't do this, we have to spend $75 million, when in fact, we do not. We can vote no today, and we can vote no next time. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Warren.
You're, you're correct. The anticipated cost will go up over the 10-year period, and each time there is an override for those repairs, the town, just like we are here tonight, would have to vote on that, and if the town doesn't pass it, then those repairs would not be fixed.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Scholz.
I would just like to correct my good friend up there on the stage. We will have to fix those repair, those items. If the roof is leaking, and we have water features in the classroom, and mold forming in the ceiling, we are going to have to fix that. That's about $8 million bucks. So I did a little finance look at it, I did, ran some spreadsheets. That's about a half million dollars a year in payments for the next 28 years, just to fix the roof leak, if we bonded out our bond fees. Coincidentally, road repairs this year that you just voted are a half million bucks. We're not going to have, we have a choice right now to use that for roads. If we have a building with mold in it, and lawsuits pending because there's mold in it, the first half million dollars we're going to look at are discretionary. It just so happens, I'm not saying this is what it will be, but half million is sitting right there in roads. So we could fund this building for $8 million for the first tranche of repairs, the roof, and, and, and then the windows, for $8 million. That's how much we're spending on roads. We're going to stop doing things like that. May not be roads, it may be departments, it may be cutting each of the departments back further and further. We'll erode town services and town features to pay for it, because we can't let the school fall apart and put kids in it with mold in it. So, so Stan, we don't have to... We, we do have a choice. We don't have to vote for this, and we don't have to vote for the subsequent overrides, but I promise you, there will be cuts that will affect everybody, whether you live in Glen Ellen, or if you live directly across from the school. Those cuts are going to affect town services, and they're going to be draconian at some point, to get to $75 million.
This is Dan Flanagan, 6 Holbrook Way, and I just want everyone to know that Craig just stole my answer, but it was way better than I could ever done, so I just wanted to thank you, Craig. Keep your eye on the ball. If we do not vote yes, then we will be spending $75 million, whether it's on an override or every other budget item in this town is slashed, and then we are left with a future that is very, very detrimental to our children. Thank you.
How's it going? Ryan Martino, 1 Walnut Hill Road. New to the town, just springing. I have 15 years' experience in commercial construction. I work for an engineering firm, I am a mechanical engineer. Looking at the project, I've actually had the opportunity to work hands-on MSBA projects, do new schools, worked on a lot of schools in New Bedford and other districts in the state. This opportunity doesn't come on, doesn't come often, there's obviously been a lot of work. This project will never be cheaper than it is today with the current plans. The climate of construction is only going to go up, the time would be now, and that would just be a professional recommendation. Thank you.
Carolyn Gutierrez, from Rockville Meadows.
Could you just speak into my ear a little closer? Thank you.
I have a question for senior citizens who might be thinking of not voting in favor of this. How many of you would like to have your grandchildren in a substandard school?
I'm here in voice of a lot of the people that are here, a lot of the parents, and family and friends. I moved to Millis in 2016. I was pregnant with my son, who's now in 4th grade. We're very happy we're going to have a new school, we're like looking forward for the school system, because they have the Spanish immersion program, very happy about it. I have three kids in the school system, 4th grade, 8th grade, and a senior. My 8th grade and senior are very good students, they're very proud to go to Millis, they love their teachers, they love the system. I love the teachers, they're all very nice, and I think they deserve better than this. I know that maybe my 8th grader and my 4th grader will see the school, because my senior obviously is leaving, but I think, in my perspective, with my family, I see this not only for my kids, but the future kids that are going to move to our town. Our town is wonderful. My kids are student athletes, they're very, very happy when they play for Millis, they feel so proud to represent, I'm sorry if I'm getting emotional, but they, they get so happy and proud when a little town in Millis, like Millis, goes and beat a town like Foxborough in basketball, and it's like, it's amazing. So having a school that represents that for our kids, who, the people who think cannot, please rethink, because I love my town, I'm an immigrant, I moved here, I, I'm proud to be a naturalized citizen, and I just, please vote yes, our kids deserve it, our future generation deserves it, and thank you.
Bob Malouf, 12 Helen Lane. I am also from Glen Ellen, and I am a friend of Stan's. Unfortunately, we disagree on this. But I have a question to, through you, Mr. Moderator, to whoever can answer it. I don't know if accreditation was an issue when we presented the project to the MSBA, and if we don't do what we need to do with the school, would accreditation ever become an issue?
Would someone like to answer that? Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. When we had our last accreditation in 2014, one of the standards is the building facility, and NEAS, which is the accrediting body, noted deficiencies in our building, and it could become an issue for our future accreditation. It was not a standard that we failed the last time, but the deficiencies were noted. Thank you.
Thank you. So if you're concerned about your property values, try living in a town with an unaccredited high school.
Yes, sir.
Am I up?
Yes, yes, you are.
Thank you. Joe Murray, 11 Jameson, also part of the Glen Ellen community. I guess I'd like to make three points, and some of it, most of them have been repeated, but I think for clarity, you know, Mr. Scholz, you did a wonderful job. If we don't vote yes, we will not get the 50, whatever, 56 million dollars. So, 68 million, excuse me, it's the 50s, anyway, 68 million dollars. Now, I'm, like all of us, very, very financially sensitive, and to me, this is a slam dunk. I mean, I'm having a hard time understanding how we want to vote no and therefore pay more money. I mean, that does not make sense. Number two, and I'm looking at the select people, and, and this didn't happen yesterday. This has been a matter of neglect by the town of Millis, both us who live here and the administration. This should never have gotten to the point of where it is today. It is embarrassing. And so, at some point, we all have to say, the buck stops here, we're going to get this thing done right, we're going to be Millis proud, and we're going to move ahead with getting this thing done. And last but not least, I still believe in the common good. I believe that in fact, there are things that we don't directly get benefit for, but we want to support it because we are a community, we are one. And I ask you to drop the line.
Ms. Rutherford Field.
Is this working? I just want to say a couple of things. Number one, there's been a lot of debate about the, the lapse from previous board members to let it get this far. First of all, it's 66 years old, I'm 70, and I let media get this far, so shit happens, and what it is. I really believe in my heart, and I truly believe this, that people do the best they can with the information they have at the time and the resources they have. We didn't have the resources 10, 15, 20 years ago. End of story. We did as best as we could, spreading thin everywhere it needed to be. Number two, the building has fantastic bones, and so much so, it's being renovated. If it was such a disaster, then the MSBA would make us tear it down like they did like with the Clyde Brown. So it hasn't been completely overlooked. But my biggest point is, I, I want to kick the can down the road and talk about what Mr. Jablonski said, that we just don't, we vote no on all these future overrides, we just let, let it fall into disrepair. Okay, we let it fall into disrepair, what's going to happen? People are not going to move to Millis, because they're coming here for the schools. The town gets its identity from the school. I don't know, people don't like to admit that, but it is what it is. The town is only as good as its schools. End of story. We have two schools, people. Medfield's got eight, Westwood's got 10. There's towns around us, we have two schools, and you want to let one of them go? You want to put everybody over in the Clyde Brown? It's like it was when my mother was in school, I'm even further. Everybody went to this building. I went to this building. Is that what we want to do? We throw us all out, and we'll bring us back here? Two schools. We need to understand, if you let it go, and we start taking from departments, the, the roads are going to go. PFAS, that we're putting millions of dollars towards, so we have good drinking water. These are the things that make Millis so good. We're so compliant with these state regs, that we get a new one every day. But we do it. But we do it with what we have. If this town goes down, people will not come here. If they don't come here, your value of your home goes down. What's going to happen? Well, Craig said you'll have to meet the levy, so the tax rate's going to double. Your value goes in half, the tax rate doubles. You're going to pay the $45 million budget. If your property value goes down from 600 to 300, okay, you're going to die here, your kids aren't going to be happy. Everything's going to go down, everything... It is what it is. So, there's no, we said there's no going up.
Thank you.
Scott, there's no going nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add anything? This is a 2/3 majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? Jim in the gym.
By first vote, more than 2/3 approve.
Motion carries.
I declare that it's a 2/3 vote.
Yes, sir. We still got a little more business to do.
I'm not sure how I follow that one, but, Article 7. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $140,404, and transfer from sewer enterprise reserves, the sum of $22,592, and transfer from water enterprise reserves, the sum of $22,592, and transfer from stormwater enterprise reserves, the sum of $22,592, for a total sum of $208,180, to fund the following capital items. For the fire department, gas meters at a cost of $30,410. For the planning board, general code software, for a cost of $16,500. For the DPW, downtown light poles, for a cost of $70,900. And for the DPW, a Chevy 3500 dump truck with plow, for a cost of $90,370, for a total of $208,180. This requires a majority vote.
Second. Motion made second, any for discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I want to discuss each capital request briefly. The gas meters for the fire department are not utilization meters, these are safety meters that our firefighters wear while responding to emergencies. These meters detect hazardous levels of dangerous gases and are required safety equipment. The existing meters have reached their end of life and are due to be, and are due for replacement. There is currently a state earmark for the funds to replace these meters, but those funds have not yet been released. If those funds are released in time, then the $30,410 will remain with the town. The general code software will create a searchable online version, searchable online versions of our zoning bylaws, town bylaws, and home rule charter, making these documents easier for the public to use and for town administrators to update. More significantly, general code subject matter experts will review these documents to eliminate errors and discrepancies that could make enforcement challenging and open the town to lawsuits. In the event a lawsuit does occur, the liability will fall on general code, not on the town. So this software will make crucial documents more accessible, improve critical workflows, and reduce town liability. For the light poles, years ago, the town upgraded the downtown light poles thanks to a grant. Over time, some of these light poles have been damaged due to vehicle strikes, no removal, and general wear and tear. Eight of them are currently damaged and are unsightly, unsafe, or both. The DPW has requested 10 light poles, eight for immediate use, and two for future replacement. And then lastly, the DPW requests, the DPW has requested Chevy Silverado will replace one of their daily drivers. The existing vehicle is high mileage, it's already two years past when we were planning to replace it, and the cost of repairs makes replacing the truck a more prudent option. The capital planning committee reviewed and vetted all of these capital requests. The finance committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Any for discussion? Majority vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jim, Jim?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $20,000 from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Fund for the design of a universally accessible trail in the public portion of the Glen Project.
Second. Motion made second, for discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
When the Glen Ellen project was approved, a portion of the land was placed under a permanent recreational easement to create public walking trails. Around 2 and 1/2 miles of trails were created. This project is for the design phase of upgrading a portion of those trails to be universally accessible. The upgrades will likely include widening some trails and converting some portions from grass to a from grass to a compacted material. In addition to making the trails accessible to people with disabilities, we expect anyone with impaired mobility, strollers, or other assistive devices to be able to use the trails more easily. These trails also represent a unique opportunity for the town, as the Regency of Glen Ellen will be responsible for ongoing maintenance. We hope these trails will be an asset for our residents and a draw for those outside our community. The finance committee unanimously recommends approval of this article. Thank you.
Any further discussion? It's a majority vote. Alls in...
Can the town explain...
I need your name and address, sir.
Sorry, third time up here. Troy Kongden, 413 Union Street. Can somebody in the town explain the process? I know Glen used to be some private club, and then it got purchased by a developer, and then it developed. Land was given to the town, and now it seems that a liability has been given to the town. Can somebody explain, is there handicap parking so that regular town residents that didn't buy into this development can access this product?
Can you hear me?
Richard Nichols, 47 Grove Street, I'm the chairman of the planning board also. When the Glen Ellen was developed, there was a section of it that was left as open trails for Millis use, Millis residents' use, includes a parking lot. It's open and accessible to the public, and the Glen is responsible for mowing to allow a path to be accessible to walk up and down. And that's how it was set up in the original development.
I'm going to listen to some more people. I might be back.
Hi, John Stebbin, 26 Glen Ellen Boulevard, a resident of Glen Ellen. I walk those trails almost every day, and had a field camera out there for a while. More than half the people that use them are non-RGE residents. They're widely used by people in Millis, in Holliston. I've even talked to people as far away as Dover. These are unique trails, and any of you that are familiar with Orchard Street, it is so unsafe for somebody with a stroller. This would be not just for people that are impaired, but for strollers, for children to see the nature in the brook. I think it's fantastic. Thank you.
Hi, Sharon Locke, 27 Island Road. For my work life, I serve on the executive board of the Massachusetts Recreation and Park Association, and I recently was at the national conference in Orlando, Florida, and accessible trails are coming. They're a huge hot-button topic. They are a very big deal around the rest of the country. Massachusetts is usually behind when it comes to conservation and recreation, and they're happening. And by their own state legislature right now, there are actually two bills that are being presented with the 194th Congress, and the bill is to bring accessible trails to Massachusetts. So I think it's very exciting that Millis can kind of be at the forefront of this. There are so many benefits to it, to allow people of all abilities to enjoy the trail system in Millis, so I would urge you to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? It's a majority vote. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Jim in the gym?
Yes, the motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to amend Article VI, Section II of the general bylaws as written in the warrant. This will require a majority vote.
Second. Motion being second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
This article, if approved, would amend the general bylaws to align with current Massachusetts procurement law 30B. The thresholds within this general bylaw were last updated in 2014, and do not currently represent the increase in costs of goods and services over the last decade. The finance committee unanimously recommends approval of this Article 8 to 0.
Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Pat Lenhart, 53 Glen Ellen Boulevard. Well, I certainly agree with the context of this. This might be a good time to clean up the language. So if you look at the wording, it's really not that tight. It says under $10,000, you're good there. Then it says between $10,001. So it actually misses a gap from $10,000 to $10,001. So my recommendation, and I don't really know the process for this, is A stands as it is, but B changes to between $10,000 and $50,000, and then C is exceeding $50,000.
So you want to make amendment to the motion? There has been amendment to the motion.
Second.
And seconded. So we're going to discuss the amendment to the motion, which is, if I get this right, under B, it'll change from $10,001 to $10,000 to $50,000. And under C, it would change, we'll just go to $50,000. Is that correct?
No, greater than $50,000, not greater than $50,001.
Greater than $50,000. Is there any further discussion on the motion to change? Yes, sir.
Steve Rider, Irving Street. I'm trying to understand the math on this. Since 2014, the Consumer Price Index has been up 38.1%. So that $3,000, $3,000 would be $4,143 today. That $10,000 would be $13,810, and the $50,000 would be a higher number as well. How do we go from a 38% increase to 300-500% increase?
I can tell you, and I say this is certified procurement state, these are the state numbers. So all they're doing right now is changing the old Millis bylaw to match the state.
Okay, so this is complying with what the state has set, not what Millis is asking for?
This is what the state has had, I think, since 2019, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
We're on the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment? So we're going to vote just on the amendment. All those in favor in the amendment, please say aye.
Aye!
Alls opposed? So amendment carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir. Jim?
Passed by voice vote in the gymnasium.
Thank you. So now we're discussing the motion. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator. Is there still...
Can you give me your name and address?
Dan Angelo, 34 Lavender Street. I figured everybody knew by now.
I know, I know you. I just want to make sure everybody else does.
Is there still a bid process? Like, do they have to get three bids? Or are they just awarding contracts to anybody they want?
This is not changing the bidding procurement laws of the state that the town falls under.
Yes, may I...
Would you like to add anything, Mr. Jizzens?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This does not change the procurement laws. We cannot override the state's procurement laws. This is simply adjusting the town's bylaw, requiring, or setting who actually gets to approve different contracts at different levels. This is, again, as was mentioned, this is in line with the state. We're basically bringing this up for operational efficiency and to bring it in line with the state procurement thresholds. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Jim?
Carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to amend Article 11, Section 2 of the general bylaws as written in the warrant.
Second. Motion being second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
This article seeks to bring the fines which the town may enforce against an owner of a dog that violates the provisions of Article 11, Section 2 of the Town of Millis bylaws, in line with state mandated minimum fines for such violations. Mr. Re...
No, it is Article 10. It's Article 11 he's modifying.
We're discussing Article 11 of the bylaws.
Of the bylaw.
Article 11 of the bylaws.
The bylaws, yes.
The finance committee approved this article by unanimous vote. It does require a majority vote.
Is there any further discussion? It's a majority vote? Yes, sir.
So...
Name and address.
Yeah, we're getting there. Troy Kongden, 413 Union Street.
Can't understand you.
Mr. Moderator, point of order. Could he speak up? I haven't heard anything that he's really said tonight, and I'm right here in the front.
You want it higher, or you want me louder? This bylaw makes it a finable offense up to $500 to have a dog leash that's 11 feet long. Am I understanding that correctly? We have extendable leads, because this town doesn't have a fenced-in area for dogs to run. So if you have, say, a ball that you want your dog to chase, and maybe you own an average-sized house in this town with an average-sized lot, I have a fenced yard. It's beautiful, but not everybody does. I think that's unreasonable. I think that the... We're passing the mic around. Do you have something to add to this?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
So actually, just for clarification, we are not changing the actual types of violations or what is a violation. All we're doing is increasing the fines attached to be in compliance with the minimum state requirements. So the state requires that these minimum amounts be set in each town. The town can be higher, but the town cannot be lower.
Right. My issue is, right now, it's a yuppie food stamp to pay for this violation. When you make it a significant amount of money, you make it so somebody can't flaunt this law, which is the state's intent, but I disagree with it. This is one of those jury nullification kind of things. The police run their dog inside our fenced-in ballpark area. What the police do violates this law. Are we going to really tell our police they can't run their dog?
Is there any further discussion? It's a majority vote. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Jim in the gym?
The motion carries by majority vote.
I agree, motion carries by majority vote.
Article 11. Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of town-owned property identified as 33-013-000, Book 4405, Page 0585, as recorded with the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds, from the Select Board for General Municipal Purposes to the Select Board for Disposition. A two-thirds vote is required.
Second. Motion being second. Further discussion?
The town voted at the 2025 Spring Town Meeting to sell or auction off parcels that the town deemed to not have any potential use for the town. This is an additional parcel of land that the town has determined to not have any future potential use for the town. Parcels that have been so identified should be declared as surplus and should be disposed of whenever possible in order to put this property back on the tax roll, usually purchased by a butters who would like to expand the size of their property. If this article is approved, the parcel will be put up for sale or auction in accordance to state law to get the widest net. The finance committee recommends this article 8 to 0. This was submitted by the Select Board.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Kevin Mahaffey, Exchange Street. Just for clarification, where is this property?
In Millis.
Really? I thought we were selling something from Medfield.
Ms. Radenfield?
This property is up in Millis Heights, which is down by the four corners by the pond where Village meets Pleasant.
It's the big piece of property in between the two roads there.
Where is it? It's on Acorn?
Please use the mic.
Sorry, Karen Brey DeMarzo, Assistant Town Administrator. This property is actually a very small landlocked posh... I can't speak. Landlocked parcel, which is right near the alpaca farm, a kind of a butts Acorn place.
Okay.
You can't reach it from the street.
No, I just, I just...
That's all.
You know, the numbers that they read off, I mean, I don't...
No, no, and it's hard to understand.
You have not memorized every plot in Millis? Next town meeting, I'm asking. Any further discussion? This is a two-thirds vote. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Jim in the gym?
Motion carries unanimously.
Declare two-thirds carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
Article 12. I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Millis zoning bylaw, Section 3C, Establishment of Zoning District zoning map, in order to amend the Town of Millis zoning map accordingly, as shown in the warrant, to be in compliance with updated 2025 FEMA flood insurance rate maps or firms, and there is a picture in the warrant. This requires a two-thirds vote.
Second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
This article, if passed, would amend the Town of Millis zoning maps to incorporate at the updated flood insurance rate maps to bring the bylaws in compliance with federal and state laws. Failure by the town to pass this could impact residents' abilities to get mortgages, refinancing, and insurance. The finance committee recommended a yes vote for this article, 8 to 0, and it was submitted by the planning board.
Thank you. Any further discussions? Once again, this is a two-thirds majority vote. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Jim?
The motion carries unanimously.
I declare a two-thirds vote carries.
Article 13. Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to amend the Millis zoning bylaws as most recently amended by amending Section 5 Use Regulations H with respect to accessory dwelling units as written in the warrant. This article requires a majority vote.
Second. Motion being second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
ADUs were sanctioned by law by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts last year. Millis residents approved an amendment to our town bylaws to allow ADUs at the May 5, 2025 town meeting. However, the State Attorney General's Office subsequently provided feedback that our bylaw amendments were too restrictive. The state views ADUs as helping to provide more housing options, promote affordable housing, and give homeowners more flexibility in using their properties. The proposed amendments in this article incorporate language provided by the State Attorney General and bring Millis into alignment with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts state law.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Majority vote. Alls in favor, please say aye. You got to be quiet, ma'am.
Sorry, my apologies.
I almost missed you.
Elizabeth Gordon, 32 Pollard Drive. Does this mean that you no longer have to be blood relatives to live in the same dwelling?
Could you repeat the question?
Does this mean that you no longer have to be blood relatives to live in the same dwelling?
Yes.
Okay. And then your parking? It says that you have to have, like, you can't be tandem next to each other. How are you supposed to park in the same place? Unless you park on the street, and then you can't park on the street between April and, what is it, November to April? So where are they supposed to park? So where are they supposed to park?
Richard Nichols, 47 Grove Street. I'm the chairman of the planning board. That was the information that came back from the state. We had done it where there was, had specific language on parking, and basically the state came back and said, you can't do that. So that's what their direction was, and that's why it's in front of you guys tonight.
Nicole Riley.
Nicole Riley, 258 Village Street, Millis Planning Board. Sorry, I was reading something. The tandem parking is front to back. State will not allow us. We had said the parking could not be front to back, so you couldn't park end to end. We wanted to require it to be side by side. The state said we couldn't put that limit on it. With regards to the family requirement, we, previous to this amendment last spring, we had a family unit by law, accessory family unit by law, which allowed for basements over a garage to be created into an apartment. And as the question was, there was a requirement that it had to be a relative, not necessarily blood relative. It could be basically your immediate family, a child, an in-law. That is no longer allowable under the new state statute. There can't be a family limitation. So the AD, the new accessory dwelling unit by law, does allow this to be used for anyone. So you could, in effect, build an ADU on your property and rent it out to whomever you choose. That actually is part of what passed in May and was approved by the Attorney General's Office.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Once again, majority vote. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Jim and a Jim? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
Article 14. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $59,000 to fund a state-required total asset valuation recertification for the Town of Millis. This requires a majority vote.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
This article, if passed, would appropriate funding to pay for a state-required recertification of the total value of, the valuation of the assets within the Town of Millis. It's basically to ensure that the town assessor is assessing at full and fair cash valuation. This article was submitted by the Board of Assessors, and the finance committee recommended a yes vote for it, 8 to 0.
Thank you. Any further discussion? It's a majority vote. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Jim?
Jim? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Article 15. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $8,200 to fund an actuarial study of the OPEB trust fund account. This article requires a majority vote to pass.
Second. Motion made second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, which primarily covers health care for retired town employees. State law requires this study every two years to calculate how much the town will owe for retiree benefits in the future. This helps the town plan responsibly and budget appropriately for these long-term obligations. The study also informs the town's auditors what our total OPEB liability is, so that the liability can be accurately reflected on our balance sheet. The finance committee recommends approval of this Article 8 to 0.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none? Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Jim?
Motion carries unanimously.
Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Article 16. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 to the OPEB trust fund account. This article requires a majority vote to pass.
Second. Motion made second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
This proposed transfer is the town's annual contribution to the OPEB trust fund, helping contribute to our long-term obligation for retiree benefits. Consistent annual funding demonstrates sound financial management and improves our bond rating for when the town needs to borrow. The finance committee recommends approval of this Article 8 to 0.
Thank you. Any further discussion? It's a majority vote. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Jim and a Jim?
Motion carries unanimously.
Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. R.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's your second. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Thank you, Jim. Don't forget to send back the... Go ahead and go.